You can call the meeting to order. We can say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. We do have one visitor signed in wishing to speak. Jeff Good from Seventeen Rowing Lane. Mr. Good, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
You can see right there.
Here, perfect, okay, thank you. All right, so, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today and thank you, like a poor Chairman Steinle for coming and explaining some of the background situation to me as well just in the last few minutes. My name is Jeff Good, as you've heard, my two children are students in the district. As I indicated in my February twentieth letter to the Board of Education, I have serious concerns about recent communications from area superintendents, including Superintendent Pennella. As the Board is aware, a group going under the name of the Erie Niagara Superintendent's Association has recently sent communications out under its name taking political positions with respect to measures put in place in schools in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Its president, Superintendent Michael Cornell of the Hamburg Public Schools, regularly appears in the media using that title of president of the association to speak on that topic. Superintendent Pennella has signed letters put out by this organization using an Amherst Central School District affiliation and the process through which that has been approved is not immediately transparent, at least I didn't see any evidence of approval for that in the board meeting minutes or other sources. There's little public information available about this organization, but my understanding is that school districts such as Amherst Central pay dues for their superintendents to be a part of it. It is not a government body of any kind, despite the fact that its name suggests that it has some kind of official status. I believe it is inappropriate for superintendents to publicly take positions on political concerns, especially in controversial areas when acting in an official capacity. This not only represents an abuse of their titles, but also casts doubts about their ability to make fair and equitable decisions for all of their district stakeholders on such topics. A particular concern regarding these recent communications is that area superintendents have in effect adopted the unsubstantiated position that masking disrupts the quote-unquote "normal" operation of schools. As we are now shifting into a situation where masking will be optional, this has clear potential to stigmatize students, staff, and teachers who still need to mask for their personal safety and the safety of their families and for whom the actual normal thing to do under the circumstances would in fact be to continue to use masks. My hope is that the Board of Education will consider taking the following steps to address these concerns. First, no longer allow district funds to be used to support the Erie Niagara Superintendent's Association, given the fact that it is engaging in political advocacy on controversial topics. Second, create a policy on the appropriate use of the superintendent title in external communications that transparently indicates when and how that is used and so that members of the district can also understand how those particular signatures were approved. Finally, I would like to see an explicit plan developed that ensures that there will be no stigmatization or exclusion of students, staff, and faculty who choose to continue to mask from district activities. I believe it is especially important for the superintendent to be proactive in this area given his recent public political activities. Current communications in my view are insufficient. It's not enough to simply state that harassment or bullying will not be tolerated, rather district leadership is to take proactive measures to ensure the safety and in particular the inclusion of all students, staff, and teachers in the district during this time of transition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Good.
Sorry for going a little over.
We did have some written communication, uh, as Mr. Good pointed out. He did send a letter, I think we all received it from the Board, outlining some of his concerns he mentioned here. Uh, we also had some letters from some prospective OSCE's, um, Board members. Uh, we had one of the incumbents, Mr. Lowe, sent a letter which I forwarded to all of you. We had, um, a newcomer, Mr. Warrenstein, Warrenstein, I'm not sure if I pronounced that right, but, um, he also sent a letter asking for our support and so did, um, just recently, uh, Ms. Mark Mecca, uh, had also another new person. So, at the present time, we have four people running for three spots on the OSCE's Board. I checked with Mrs. Custody, we need to make a nomination to this, for these, for three people to be nominated by our next board meeting. And then the following board meeting, we will actually vote, um, on whoever's on the ballot. So, um, so just so everybody knows, um, so we can, we will be discussing that at our next board meeting. We're looking to, um...
Mr. Steinle, I think that the vote is actually April seventeenth.
April seventeenth, okay, but at our next meeting, we have to vote, or are in our second April?
The next meeting, we have to nominate.
Next meeting, nominate.
Well, it must be like the nineteenth, because the seventeenth is the Easter.
Okay, so then it would be the nineteenth. But it is the middle of the month.
Okay, perfect. Um, Board and Committee reports, I can start it off. There was a Capitol Committee, uh, meeting since our last, uh, meeting. It was the last of four, um, meetings, building, um, level meetings. So this one revolved around the high school and discussed the different needs and wants that the building has. The, also discussed, um, on the, the meeting was, um, the next meeting's gonna have our, our, um, what was it? Our financial advisor, you know, come and, or be present and discuss what we can, can't afford. The building condition survey is underway, it should be done, I believe they said, was it sometime May, possibly?
Yeah, probably before, but yeah, I think that's the timeline we're working with.
Which, then we can compare what needs to be done and wants and what we can afford and what have you. So, more to come. Is, do we have any other committee or Board reports? Um, I would just also, then, while I have a minute, like to, um, remember Leslie Kramer, Leslie Schumi Kramer, who is a former Board member. She was on the, she was elected to the Board while I was on the Board early on. She passed away this past week. Uh, so I'd just like to take a moment to recognize her and her service to the district. She was a very active volunteer, uh, very active in the community. So I just wanted to recognize her and her service to the district. We won't miss her. With that, I will turn it over to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to take a minute just to provide a brief update about what happened over the weekend relative to, um, the mask mandate in schools. Um, I think it's fairly straightforward, um, but I did want to address, um, just a few topics so that everyone is on the same page and that, you know, we're officially on the record with some things. For example, you know that on Sunday Governor Hochul held a press conference where she effectively lifted the mask mandate for schools, making them optional, um, effective tomorrow. Um, initially she had reported that she would reevaluate it after winter break and we would see something around March fourth or around the March seventh timeline. Um, I think the timeline was expedited, um, with the release of the CDC updated guidelines that came out the previous Friday to, uh, Sunday twenty, the twenty-seventh. So the mask mandate is, um, going to be ending in schools tomorrow. Um, we are told specific guidance is coming from the New York State Department of Health. We were expecting it today. Um, we didn't get it as of yet, but, you know, sometimes things come from the State Department of Health at this time of the day, so, uh, keep my eye on the inbox. Once we receive it, you know, as usual, uh, we will review it and we have a structure in place where we can get our committees back together, review the guidance, review our safety plan, and make any adjustments that need to be made. So that structure has served us well, um, throughout the last two years and will continue to maintain that structure. Um, Amherst will continue to implement our mitigation efforts throughout the remainder of the school year, specifically when it comes to, um, nerve thirteen and air purifiers. As the weather gets warmer, we'll have more windows open and that will be encouraged. Um, we'll see what the guidance says, but at this point, social distancing, to the extent practicable, in the hallways and cafeterias remains. I know people are eager to move away from some of those practices, which we will do so when it's safe. Um, daily sanitization of classrooms and highly touched objects will remain in place. Um, isolation, you know, with COVID positive cases that we're made aware of, as well as, um, test-to-stay procedures remain in place. Um, and we'll encourage anyone that is, um, has health concerns or whether it's for themselves or a household member or a family member they're regularly in contact with to continue to wear masks. I fully expect to see, um, you know, a variety of folks wearing masks within our buildings tomorrow, amongst our staff, our students, and all of the folks that inhabit our buildings. Um, the choice will simply be like it is with anything in our school district. We respect people's differences, we respect the diversity of our school district. No one will be ostracized or harassed or excluded from any activity or opportunity provided by the district. You know, my goal is to make sure that everyone feels safe, um, in this environment and that, more importantly, the environment is conducive to learning because that's what everybody is here for. Um, so, I can guarantee that all of our administrators are aware of that and we've been messaging that from, actually maybe two or three updates ago, um, because we did have a little bit of a precursor to what that might look like when states surrounding the tri-state area removed the mask mandate a few weeks ago and we saw how that played out in some of those, um, schools in, in those states. So, we've been on top of that and, and we've been planning to make sure that there's messaging for our kids to respect people's differences and personal choices and we'll continue to make sure that that happens. So when we have the next steps for us, um, starting tomorrow, we'll be venturing into this world of mask optional, uh, which I think is exciting for many and maybe a little bit, um, of an anxious moment for some. And then, once we receive updated guidance from our state health department, which I'm told includes mostly recommendations and very few, if any, requirements, you know, we will review those recommendations with our committee structure to see if, um, any parts of our plans need to be adjusted. So thank you. Any questions?
Has Erie County made any mention of anything? Are they planning on doing anything outside of what the state's recommending?
I don't think so. Um, we got an update from their spokesperson and it reiterated that the mask mandate ends tomorrow and just encouraged, same, similar to what I have here, you know, any immunocompromised folks or, you know, folks that want to continue wearing masks to do so. Um, the other thing it also included, which is a good reminder, is that the county will be supplying us with enough N-95 or KN-95 masks for our students and staff. So I completed a survey before the winter break telling them how many student-sized ones we would need versus how many adult-sized ones we would need and those should be forthcoming in the near future and we'll make them available to our, you know, stakeholders as soon as possible. So it's, it's definitely, uh, interesting time, um, given where we've been in the last couple of years and it's one I think many have looked forward to and one that I think some approach with reservation and we'll do our best to make sure everyone feels comfortable and safe like we always do.
And based on the guidance coming out, we should be able to potentially return to our boardroom next evening?
I think so, if that's the will of the Board, um, you know, I would tip my hat to Windermere as a gracious host and look forward to going back to our regular, um, accommodations.
We will miss the flickering light, but...
I got a surprise. I upgraded the boardroom in our absence, you may be pleasantly surprised. So now I'd like to, uh, welcome Mr. Kice, our assistant principal and Dr. Griesmer principal from the middle school for an update on the middle school, um, year so far this year.
Can we see the rest of the Board?
What do you want us, Lori?
You want me over here?
Anyone outside? I gotta make sure I don't block it, but it's his turn. I think that's called upstage him, the theater room, but... All right, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here in person with you to be able to give this presentation on our beloved Amherst Middle School. Uh, tonight's flow is gonna be pretty, pretty basic and arcing back to our pillars affiliated with our strategic plan, right? We're gonna talk to you a little bit about some great things happening in terms of student life, in terms of learning and achievement, and in terms of Amherst proud. And to get things rolling, Mr. Kice will take it away with student life.
Thanks. Um, great to be here in person too. Uh, and I think that's gonna be a theme that you guys are gonna hear throughout a lot of this presentation. It's kind of a, a give back to the typical experience, the school experience. And I'll say from my, my perspective, when I was in middle school, high school, some of my best memories were in the camaraderie from sports teams and relating to the teachers, the coaches, things like that. And that's one of the things that we are absolutely proud of to be able to bring back, starting from day one. There's a lot of the teams that have been running. Thanks to a lot of the COVID protocols and safety precautions we've put in place, very few interruptions for our students and we can continue that flow. Uh, we also have clubs running all throughout. So it, it's been a great start to the year, at least from the extracurricular activity, to kind of give students those experiences that may have been missed over the past couple of years and try to jumpstart that typical school experience. Keeping with that theme, one of the things that we started to do as well, uh, in starting in the fall, was not just the extracurricular clubs or the sports teams, but able to bring all students into the building to kind of be able to collaborate, work with each other, and build relationships. What you see, um, up on the screen right now is our Fall Fun Day and that was geared towards both the athlete and the artist. We brought in students, students were able to participate in the gym in a couple of games activities, from knockout, foul shooting competitions, but also wanted to join a friend or just work on artwork individually. We set campuses in our south gym. And you see some of the artwork that students created. Um, they could do it together individually with some staff members present and again, building that bond between not only each other, but also some of the staff members that may have been missed through a computer screen last year. Um, it was, it was a very fun time. I was there, I will say, it, it was a good time.
Okay, in, in keeping with student life, like, not only have we had a return to the full array of athletic teams, not only are we back to the full array of clubs, and not only are we doing isolated activity nights today, but our musical department is back to full swing. And that's really, really cool. And the auditorium is getting there. And those of you who have seen me at the last several events in the auditorium, you know how giddy I am about slowly getting more people back in there to support our kids. And, um, we, we, we cracked the door open last spring. And thank you all in advance, you know, after the fact, but also beforehand for letting us do that in the spring and it was hyper-controlled in a very small crowd. But now we took that doorway and we walked through it. Still not full capacity, but we had a wonderful concert in December and we had a wonderful concert in February, the week before, uh, February three. And I had a fun little plan here to show you. Somewhere in between our rehearsal twenty-five minutes ago and us getting here, Lori said, "John, the sound has gone from the December one." I was gonna have you just listen to December sound and then very intentionally want to show you with your eyes what our auditorium looked like in February. I can't do the December, I'm gonna have to skip right to my February, but you'll get the point. Um, the February concert was the small ensemble. All right, so our ARCO, our Jazz Lab, um, and, um, and, and pop chorus, but what, what happened in our closing number was perfect for this point. So I had, um, the opportunity to have Mr. Biddle close us out. And you will see here why I'm so excited about not only getting our kids on stage, but getting our families back in the on. Think you're getting the vibe for the song, we all know it. So everybody started doing it and it goes on for another minute forty-five seconds. But I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna advance it. Then they got the clock going. And then, I start to walk. And, and this sums up the return, right here. Like, there's people in the balcony and they're dancing. Like, that is, that is getting life back to what we know. Like, that's a sound you miss hearing. And it's coming back. And along those, along those eyes, once we advance, within the music department, right? The show must go on and it did. So as you know, we were really excited, fingers crossed, about having an in-person musical again in our auditorium. Right? But you may know, it may sound familiar, that our musical is historically in January. And you know, all of the hullabaloo, hullabaloo around this past January. So we had some meetings and we said it is probably more prudent to push it out. Can we pull that off? And of course, with Aaron Air and Paul Biddle and the rest of the crew and Superintendent Pennella's support, we found the date. And it was February ninth. And we did it and we had even more people in the, in the, in the, in the auditorium than we did for the previous concert. Again, following the health and safety guidelines, but they were there. And our kids hit it out of the park. High School Musical Junior, uh, the, the picture on the left is the closing number, full cast, they were awesome. I'm gonna play a music clip and I have to tell you, I'm showing a little favor, isn't I? You all know I'm a bit of a basketball fan and I was pleasantly reminded about this musical that there is. It's a basketball theme strewn throughout. So this number is one of the basketball-specific pieces. I tried, the previous one, it said it's unavailable when I did it. You see that full screen is unavailable? It was, on my computer twenty minutes ago, it was available. So I don't know why, I wish I could. So in the student life sense, we are back in so many ways and it's been such a highlight of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And now we'll transition over to the learning and achievement program.
And, and speaking of being back, um, we are back for the full schedule. Not, not a couple days a week, um, not on live. We are back for a full student body, full class periods, forty minutes. You see an example of our, our schedule on the Board. Um, teachers have welcomed the opportunity to have students in the class every single day for forty minutes, as well as, um, we do have the assessments coming up in March, uh, May, and June, as well as the final exam calendar. Uh, that is a draft, so you see it, that it's not hard copy yet, it's not finalized, but, um, students are gonna be able to chance to showcase, um, not only the skills that they gained this year, but also the content knowledge, um, for moving through to next year. So, this is academics and then moving, uh... This is a, is a little bit of a wrinkle, I think, for, for some, some people. Um, as, as we know, the pandemic may have created some gaps in learning for, for some of our students. Um, with the support of certain, uh, district-level personnel as well as one of our amazing AIS teachers, Renee Marco. Um, Renee, Ms. Marco created, um, basically a fractions and action, um, curriculum, I guess is the best way to put it. And what it is, is an opportunity for some of our students that have a study hall in their schedule to basically get enrichment throughout the, the entire year. Um, and what it is, is, it's the same skills, it's the same content stuff that they're gonna be learning in their normal classes, their typical classes, but it just takes a, a little bit of a spin and, and puts it in almost real-life scenarios, but also kind of a little bit more of a, of a fun way to do math. And you'll see obviously with billiard table, with angles, she did some fractions, she did some measurements. Um, they did an art piece using just, just measurements. Um, and it's been very fun and I put a quote up there from one of the kids' surveys that it's, it doesn't feel like math, it's, it's fun, you're learning at the same time, but it's an opportunity for us, as a district, to be able to close some of those math gaps and Ms. Marco is doing an amazing job. She's also heading our math club that's starting this week as well. So, um, really taking some initiative and trying to close those gaps for us. And I wanna, I, I wanted to make sure I put this point up there because it's a data-driven world and one of the things that she also incorporated, um, with the district's support was to give pre and post tests. Now, usually you see red on the screen that's using the... In this case, the post tests, um, far outweigh those pretests. And you can see just in, in those little instructional strategies that she used in some of her units, the amount of growth that students showed in such a little, a little bit of time, okay? And it also is translating into their normal math classes. So this fraction and action that was kind of, you know, put together to close this gap is really taking off in, in a way that I think we all hoped and didn't think it would do so quickly. So these, these real-life scenarios, the artwork, um, Ms. Marco and, and the district really deserve a lot of credit for being able to think outside the box and fill in some of those scheduled pieces that, um, really helped kids in the math theory.
Okay, in sticking with that concept of gaps and trying to meet kids where they are and give them all the help they need. I think, I think you're aware of the acronym MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, the, the sort of most current acronym for that world of remediation of AIS. And we, we jumped into this right, right when it became a part of New York State's initiative, pre-COVID. And thanks to Dr. Shanahan being on board and a colleague of hers at the university and state level, Teresa Janzett, who helps districts with MTSS, we all got together and started to implement the MTSS protocols into our school buildings, AMS being no exception. And we got it going off the ground. Everybody was excited and then the pandemic. And it made it a little complicated to write in its truest form. The reason I have this slide on here is I'm so excited to say we got back to one of the true intents of this work this year. In particular, in the mid-year grade-level meetings. So one of the central tenets of Multi-Ti, Multi-Tierred System of Supports here in New York State is to really gauge or benchmark your students, all of them, in the fall, then midway through, and then in the spring and make appropriate decisions based on how they're doing, how they're doing in regular core area math and ELA classes and on the Google side of the channel as well. And, and then also track their progress monitoring if they're currently in an intervention. Now that's all well and good, you can do that. But the extra challenge they put on the table, and rightfully so, is you should assess mid-year how things are going. And if John Griesmer needs to be in a different remediation, it's, it's our expectation and your responsibility to see if you can get them in that more appropriate remediation, now that he's halfway through the year. Now that is much easier said than done. But thankfully, I have people in the district to partner with, people helping, helping me leave the building and such unbelievable teachers that we can pull, pull it off. But it, it's a Herculean effort. And, and this slide is here because they did it. We did the benchmark. We collected all the additional data. We put it all together. And then you have to meet and have substantive thoughtful discussion to land it. And that is not easy for many, many, many students. And that is not easy for many, many, many students. So what we do in this mid-year grade level setting is we take our committee, which is quite a, quite a good number of our AIS department, some general education, math, and ELA teachers, the psych, school psychologist, a counselor, administration, we are the committee. We get everything ready. And then we take a day and we invite all the other math and ELA teachers by grade level, all the other AIS and counselors who are not already on the committee, and we split the day into thirds, and we go through every single student who has made that spreadsheet to figure out, how are they doing? Do they need a different section? Do they stay in the current section or, or not? So on the left, you see me pointing to our spreadsheet and one of, one of the students that we're talking about in particular. And on the right, you see us, we commandeered the library for the day and we got after it. And we worked, right, Dr. Shanahan, I would say, from about 8:00 to 3:45. No one could really stand up when we were done, um, but it, but it, it got done and we were pretty happy after that. Now, the work still isn't done at that point, because as soon as that's over, then we have to give all the decisions to our school counselors to see now if it's even physically possible to change the schedule in that way. And our counselors are fantastic, they got after it, and we were right around the mid-year switch, which is the goal of MTSS, that sort of semester mark to make a change. And we made multiple changes. So in, in terms of learning and achievement, that is setting us, our students up for success. That is trying to best meet them where they are. In, in a machine, that is very tough to do that with. You've got a set number of teachers, a set number of theories, and 700 children. It's tough, you know, that, that's why you have classrooms filled with multiple children, right? That's how the system was created. This tries to say, no, we wanna do even more than that. We wanna get more granular with those efforts and really personalize what each child is getting. So really proud of, of our group to pull that off. This slide highlights the now famous Amherst Central Perk coffee shop in Mrs. Goldman's room. This concept could fit under any of the three pillars. It is undoubtedly a big part of student life. It is, without a shadow of a doubt, a part of Amherst pride. I'm gonna tell you why I put it in learning and achievement. Because the students involved, yes, they're getting big-time coffee people like me, coffee on Wednesday, right? And it, and it creates a buzz in the room. But more importantly, there is math work, computational work, conversational work, fine and gross motor skill work, going on for these students the entire time. They're prepping for the time the shop's open, while the shop's open, and when it's closed. And that's phenomenal. So learning and achievement can come across a building, it can come with something as simple as returning to our normal bell schedule, and it can come in one class with five kids. And if you've not seen it already, Western New York has also figured this out, that there's great things going on.
We have Fort Hurex and these are called punch cards.
A couple of times a month, this student-run cafe opens for business.
We stop everything, but the kids do the real work.
For the bourbon.
Absolutely.
Better than any coffee I pack.
I hope you're having a good day.
Uh, Jen, how about you? So we appreciate the fact that Western New York has taken notice and it's a busy section of the school on the Wednesdays that we do it, and I look forward to it continuing for the rest of this year, hopefully in years to come. And now, uh, to the final section of the evening, Amherst Pride.
So, uh, what you're gonna see the next, I'm gonna go back to what I originally said is being back in the building. And then one of the things that I will attest to as a teacher, as an administrator, the best way that students will be able to learn is if they have comfort and relationships with them, the students beside them, but also their teachers. So I wanna finish it off by saying, you know, some of the spirit weeks that we put on, we put on a bunch of, from, from the Bills Week and the Bills Playoff Run, to obviously Homecoming that you see on the right with some of our orange and black, to the Halloween. We didn't have a Halloween dance, but we actually, you know, allowed students, um, to, to wear costumes. And I'll tell you, the teachers embraced it just as much. Uh, and it was a way for students and the teachers to kind of come together and, and actually have some fun, but also be in, be in it together. And that's what, you know, school, school is about, is, is kind of coming together and finding ways to, to support each other towards success. We also recently, um, in our, in our hopes of, of trying to make sure we make our hallways a, a bit, a safer place, a nicer place, um, we had a kindness week. And you'll see some of the doors, and it is, we can't do door decorating, it's a fire hazard, but we did allow, um, all these homerooms, um, so aside from different classes, the homerooms, um, were able to come together with their teachers, maybe some that they don't actually have, but kind of develop, um, certain ideas on how they wanted to, I guess, convey the message of kindness and being nice to each other and treating each other as, as we would wanna be treated. Um, I put one up here that I was a little, a little in part to the, the Bianna times, um, in honor of the Bills. So, um, but that's, that's one of the things that I think, you know, I, I take the most pride in, and I, I know I've only been here for a year and a half, but just seeing the school come together and, and over the last year and, and kind of what we've accomplished, but also where we're going and the, the amount of effort that's put into building that camaraderie, not just between students, but the staff and students. And then lastly, uh, going outside of our, our walls, our AMS service club was able to put together a couple service projects, not only to help each other within the school walls, but also some neighboring organizations of the community. You'll see on the left-hand side is, uh, the Keep Toby, Toby's Winter Warmth Drive, Keep Toby Warm, um, suits and staff brought in, scarves, hats, gloves, mittens, whatever you might need in a buffalo winter, um, to be able to put on Toby. You know, you can hand it into a staff member if you want, you could put up there discreetly if you wanted. It also helped out students. So any student that may have needed it, that they didn't want access for, can walk up to Toby, take it if they needed it. Anything that was left over was given to some of the local organizations. Same thing with the Candy Cane Project, you know, and working with some of the neighboring organizations, uh, we made sure, and our service club made sure, that a lot of Amherst families were able to enjoy the holidays with some of the items that are up there. And if you can't read it, it's also winter clothing, but it's sports gear, sports days, sporting equipment, gift cards, grocery cards, anything that we can help our community out with. So that's one of the things that I will say that, you know, I, I've come to really take pride in here, is not only helping each other within the building, adult, child alike, but also the neighbors. So thank you to all of our students and families, and I really appreciate the support.
And with that, we'll, we'll conclude by saying we talked to you about how opportunities abound for our kids throughout the building, uh, in the student life sense. And they are grabbing a whole lot of horns and tibbers in the building. And that, that is fantastic. We talked to you about learning achievement, achievement, about how some of, some of the foundational level things we do in the building are back and how, as evidenced by fractions and action, right, and MTSS, there are, there are new things taking place as well. And then we concluded, uh, by talking to you about, you know, the awesome things that we didn't talk about, the work in a district like this, Amherst pride moments, and there are so many. So while the 21, 22 school year has been a continued pandemic era state, and it's tough on a lot of us every single day, there is still quite a lot to settle. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the update and as an update, um, New York State is consistently inconsistent. At 7:21, we received a six-page guidance document on what life should look like in schools with masks optional. So it looks like there's a lot for us to review as a group and digest, and I'm sure we'll have an update as soon as possible for our community. Thought that was maybe something that was unique to the last, um, administration, but seems to carry on with the new one. Late-night guidance drops at the last minute. I look forward to reading that tonight when we get home. With that said, um, at the end of this recording.
Great. Now we'll need a motion for new business items.
Uh, we can motion business items E1, A through H, 2, B through E, 3, B, D, E, and H.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, somebody.
Okay, oh.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through H, 2, B through E, and 3, B, D, E, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Um, I would like to mention, um, it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Penelope, but six years ago today, that Mr. Penelope accepted, you know, this big responsibility to take over for us, so congratulations.
Wow, thank you.
How's that feel?
Yeah.
Has this?
Seems like yesterday, yeah?
All right.
No regrets, Tom?
You can see it's been six wonderful years.
Well, we appreciate it.
Minus two. Two more.
First four, wasn't it?
Yeah, right.
Mrs. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
No.
Great, then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding appointment of a particular person and contract negotiation.
All in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Patrick, for coming.